All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals Public Meeting. Tonight is February 10th, 2022. We have one hearing on the schedule tonight. It's a variance and a special permit for Sixth Tremont Street. I guess I would ask the applicants to come up and be seated at this table here with the microphone. I'm going to ask Stephen to read the public notice, please.
Town of Oxford, Zoning Board of Appeals, Public Hearing Notice. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM by the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals at the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. Consider this special permit in variance application of Gary P. Collette, the property owned by Tina Galeno.
It's close enough.
Okay, there it is. Sixth Tremont Street, Oxford, Mass. Assessors map 34B parcel C05 in the R3 residential zoning district. The applicant requests a special permit in accordance with Chapter 3, Use Regulation Subsection 1.2.2.1 of the Oxford zoning bylaw to alter or extend the pre-existing non-conforming nature of the existing dwelling and parcel to construct a 10 by 4 by 13 addition and request a variance in accordance with Chapter 10, Dimensional Requirements, Table 6 of said zoning bylaw from the required side yard setback for construction of the addition and further in the accordance with the Chapter 40A, Section 10 of the MGL. The application can be viewed in the office of the town clerk or land management department during all office hours. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, date and time designated, or submit written comments to the board before the date of the hearing. See masspublicationnotices.org for legal notice. Yeah. Board of Appeals, Town of Oxford, to the applicant of the Zoning Board of Appeals. You are hereby advised of the following provisions of the Oxford zoning bylaws. Appeals. Appeals to the Zoning Board of Appeals must be filed within 20 days from the date or order of decision which is being appealed specifying the grounds thereof. Variances. In order to grant a variance for the requirements of this bylaw, the Zoning Board of Appeals must find that all of the following conditions have been met. A. There are unique circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape or topography of such land or structures. B. Especially affect such land or structures but do not generally affect the zoning district in which it is located. C. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, but not of a personal nature to the petitioner or appellant. And D. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying a substantial re- de- regating from the purpose of this bylaw. Special permit. Special permits may be issued only for uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and shall be subject to general or specific provisions set forth herein. In addition, conditions, safeguards and limitations on time and use may be imposed by the board when using a special permit. In granting this special permit, the board shall determine if the following conditions have been met. The site is appropriate. Location for the use of the structure. The soils are suitable for onsite sewage disposal. Inadequate water supply can be provided. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. And C. There will be no nuisance or serious hazardous to vehicles or pedestrians. In accordance with Chapter 40A, Section 15 of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby advised that any person agreed by this decision of the board relative to this matter must file an appeal as provided for Section 17 of said Chapter 40A within 20 days after the date of the filing of this decision in the office of the town clerk.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
All right. I'm going to just go through the packet to make sure we all have the same information, and then you can have a chance to tell us more about what you're trying to do or explain anything. We have the legal notices. Stephen read. We have the instructions. I have the instructions for filing the appeal, the pieces of documentation that are required. I have a question maybe to the board and to Mary on this. The, it says completed three-page application, but I always only see two pages of the application.
It is the...
Is it the tax form?
It's the tax page.
Okay. And we don't, that was not in my packet.
Okay.
So, and that happened last time, right?
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be in mine either.
It wasn't sent to me in...
It wasn't? It wasn't part of the...
I thought the three page. I thought the instruction was first page. That's...
So I think that's a gap that...
My apologies.
No, that's not your fault, but just going forward, the people aren't getting it. That's why they're not giving it to us. All right. Okay, so the application page was signed by the owner and the applicant with a description. We see a copy of the deed here from 2001. We have a cut from the assessors map showing the property and the surrounding area, a list of the abutters from the town. We have a certified plan showing the existing house and the proposed addition. We have the denial letter from the zoning enforcement officer stating that a variance and a special permit. We have a letter from Mr. Collette explaining the reasoning for the application, and we have a documentation of need from professional form relating to resident Matthew. How do you say that? Galeno?
Jalino.
Jalino?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'll open it up to the applicants. If you want to talk to us more, tell us what you're trying to do, explain things.
For my client, Tina, she has, is he autistic or autistic and...
A non-verbal autism with developmental delays and a seizure disorder.
And her home presently is a three-bedroom home where all three bedrooms are located on the second level, and Matthew is now 18. And he has, I guess progressively, not gotten better, not really gotten worse, but he's at a point where he's an adult and he's, he needs water a lot of times when he gets into one of his epileptic fits, and he has to go downstairs. The only bathroom is on the first level. So, her doctor recommended that he, either there be a facility on the second level, which there's no place to put a facility unless they eliminate one of the bedrooms. And presently, she has a daughter, a son in her cell, so the three bedrooms are in need of hers. So the only option really would be to put a bedroom addition on the first level. And unfortunately, her home is a small home on a small parcel of property, and by trying to fit this addition in, in the confines of what we need to do, the only spot that's adequate because she has septic in the rear of the house and a drive on the other side of the house, which is also close to a property line, was really the only feasible spot to try to put an additional room for her son so he could be, he could access the bathroom on the first level without having an issue with him going up and downstairs in the middle of the night. So we are asking basically to have the side yard setback reduced accordingly in order to be able to facilitate this small addition.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the board members. They may have some questions or want some clarification. Would you mind starting, Dan?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter, chairman. So one question I have, just to clarify. Oh, thank you for being here, first of all. So the existing setback is, was it 13.4 feet? And then you want to, you want to go down to 3.9? Is that correct?
Yes, the 3.9 is going to be the tightest, the tightest spot from the addition to the side yard setback. And yes, and the previous was 13 foot or 13.4.
13.4 to 3.9.
Yep.
Peter, I can, that was the one, I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
That was what I had.
We'll come back if you have other questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Al, did you...
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. Steve?
Not really. I'm looking at the, the street, Tremont Street, and his houses would, it looks like they have additions on the side or extensions and sheds in the back.
So you're saying it's somewhat consistent with the neighborhood?
Yeah, you know, if you're looking at it, what I'm looking at, you know, the two houses to the left and one to the right.
Given how the, the structures are shown on the tax map, I think it's very misleading because it looks like half of the house is literally on...
On the line.
On the line.
Okay, okay. Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt you. But the wrong property is highlighted on the map.
Oh!
I believe.
Right.
To clarify, because it confused me for quite a while.
Which property is it then?
I believe it is, where'd my map go?
Would the applicant have the tax map handy?
I have it. It's this one right here. It's, it's the one next to the big C. If you flip your map around, so it's, it's the one to the right of the big C.
Oh, the small lot.
Yes, the small lot there.
Yes, it's five and a half.
It says 50...
Okay.
Yeah, I can't read it.
That certainly clarifies a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Highlighted, when I, highlighted, it is incorrect.
I don't know. You tell me if you want to come check this out, or you show me which one you have highlighted on yours. We'll see if we're, I hope we're talking about the same property. It's this one right here, I believe. I think it's this one down at your finger. Maybe I'm wrong, but the property plan, right, I looked at the streetside view. I mean, look at the, look at the shape of the house and...
If it's to the right of the big C, that would be...
Like if you were on the street looking at your house...
Your budding house is...
What is right to the right?
Looking at my house to the...
Number One New Street, correct?
Yeah, that would be, you know, I don't remember his name, but...
You've got the, you've got the stone wall to the right of your property, and it drops down to their driveway.
No, the stone wall's across the street.
That would be Aunt Pinkham's house.
All right, so maybe I'm confused.
Could the applicant actually come up here? Just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
No, no, that is, because that, that is Flynn's house. That's her house. That's my house.
Is that your house or is it this one?
This is New Street. When you come around New Street, yeah, it's this one.
Yeah. But this, but this right here, when I looked on the thing, there was a stone wall right here. This is your driveway on this side of the house, right?
Okay, so that's Bartlett. No, no, that's not her house. Because this is my house. That's her house, right here.
This is the, this is the street here.
This is the street.
So yeah, she's right to the C. So here you go.
Oh, right to the C?
Yeah, I'll show you.
So it's this here?
Yes, yes.
So this is it.
Yep. This is Bartlett coming out, and that's my house. That's her house, right in the middle there.
So, so your house is here?
Yep.
And then you're here.
And this is the King's.
Okay, so it is this one. You were right. Okay.
Yes, but the other part is, when I looked at the pictures on, you know, streetside view on the computer yesterday, it, there was, I'm looking from the street, looking at the front of your house, and I see the, the neighbor here. And I saw two cars parked on the right side of your house. When I say the right side from here.
Yes.
So this side.
Yep.
Right? And, and, and then there was a stone wall before getting to the neighbors, and at the stone wall, it dropped down.
Your driveway is on the left, right? So your driveway's on the left.
I'm totally confused.
If I'm looking at my house?
Yeah.
If you're standing in the street looking at your house.
Because this is upside down as well.
Yes.
Your driveway's on the left.
The wall that you're talking about is across the street from her.
That's just...
So yeah, that's the neighbor, and I've stored a jack, so then there's that stone wall between Jack and that he put up between him and the neighbors, and they have two car parking in there.
Her neighbor's on the right, and they put the addition, and the wind drops off a little.
So this is Bartlett, so that's this house.
So the one, the one circle is yours though, right?
So you know what? You looked up the house with the yellows.
And it, and the shape of it didn't match this. So I turned around, and it matched this one here. And when I was looking at what I thought was this one, I could see this one here, which again, I...
Oh, there's, so at the, I know, here we go. At the, at her property line, at Flynn's property line, she has like a, is it a parking space or something?
She uses it as a parking space.
Yeah, they don't even use it anymore because the kids all moved out. But she had like stones up there.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, and so that might be seen differently from like a Google map shot or something.
Oh, it's a street view, but that, so that's not your driveway?
No, her driveway's on the others, on the side closest to me.
So you're saying your driveway's over here?
So...
This is Tremont Street?
Okay, this is Tremont. Yep. So yeah, she's on, we share.
So this is the driveway right here?
Tremont Street goes in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's Tremont.
The curb cut, the curb cut is on the left side of our home.
I'm sorry, I don't want to, you go ahead.
All right, so does anybody else?
It's like a field trip. It's like right there.
I know, and I wanted to drive by. It was dark.
You'll, you'll have to serve coffee.
That's not a problem.
I apologize. My eyes are going, I guess.
Anybody else need clarification of which property it is or...
The right of the C, is that the one?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Right of the C.
Directly across the street from her.
It has 55, it has 55.5 on the dimensions at the street. Very small letters, but 55.5.
I'll take your word for it.
It is the smallest lot in the neighborhood. Yep, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize.
All right, so, I'm sorry, who was asking questions?
Steve. I'm getting old because I forgot what I was asking. Although, I was comparing it to all the other dwellings.
Yeah.
They had jogs on them.
Oh, then David asked the question.
Where the houses are situated on the, on the property. So, you know, looking at her home, I mean, that is the only way, only place that they could put this addition. Can't put it in the front, can't put it in the back, can't put it on the other side.
Actually, I did have a question along those lines.
I'll do it.
If I could, I'll send it back to you afterwards, Mr. Chairman. Maybe you could, you could help me on this. Could you explain why the addition could not go off of the back of the house?
Because of the septic and the leaching.
The leaching field would be right underneath it?
It would be close to the, the leaching, I think, there's actually other setbacks that would then involve, you have to be a certain...
I think you have to be 25 feet off.
From, from the...
From the leaching field. Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure where that might be located, whether in the back of the house or coming out the other side of the house. But, okay, no, you, you've answered that. Thank you. The house to, so if you were standing in front of the house, looking at your home, the house to the right, it looks like it's virtually on the lot line? Am I, am I pretty much correct?
Flynn's.
On the lot line? I don't know what that means.
No, the C there, the one to the right is the C. And that's just, that's not the house. The house is, so there, her property is pretty large in that corner.
That's the assessors number C they put on there. That's not...
Oh, it looks like a structure.
Yeah, I know, it does. That's the C, yeah. Just to the right of the C is the actual house.
Oh!
So it's a substantial difference, distance from the lot line there.
All right, so, so that block is not a structure at all?
Correct. To the right of that block is, the smaller block is the structure, is the home there.
So if there were a need for the fire truck to get there, there would be enough room to bring whatever apparatus had to be brought in between the two properties?
Yes, most definitely. It's all grass. It is, there is a little drop off, but it's, it's all grass between, between the two structures, her house.
My, my concern obviously goes to safety if your son is going to be in that and something were to happen at night, the, the fire truck and, and the firemen could, could have easy access.
Yes.
I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Did you have anything else, Steve?
On the addition, is it just windows? Are you going to have a door, access door or anything?
There will just be windows to the outside. There'll be an access door from, from her living room inside into the bedroom. Yes. But there'll be no, there'll be no, other than windows, there'll be no access.
True. I'm all set.
All right, that was one of the questions I had. And I did see in your, in your paperwork that you said you understood there'd be a deed restriction that goes with this?
Yes.
To make sure it stays at three bedrooms? I'm assuming the septic is just sized for three bedrooms?
Exactly, yep.
Okay. And is that a condition we would place on it, Mary, or that happens by default?
I think that can happen when they apply for their building permit application. They can probably give us a plan of the existing floor plan. So you've got three bedrooms upstairs now. Are you going to convert one of those into...
Bathroom.
A study, no.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Upstairs. Okay, so you'd want to show that to us on a before and after plan?
It won't be a bath, it won't be a bedroom, yes.
But it won't be a bedroom?
Yep.
And I think as long as the Board of Health knows that it's going to only be a three bedroom, I don't think any type of deed restriction needs to be recorded.
I, I did inquire on that, and I was told it does.
You inquired with the Board of Health?
I inquired with the Board of Health, and they informed me that there would need to be a state of Massachusetts that has a, has a form that we would have to fill out.
If your system is large enough, then you could end up putting a fourth bedroom. So I think the concern maybe is just to have it limited to three.
Yes, and, and I, I had, I had obtained all of the information on their existing septic and the size of their, their tank is only adequate for a three-bedroom. It does not support a fourth bedroom, so, which is why the Board of Health would require the deed restriction put on the, put on the property so her and any future homeowner has that as, as a record of...
To your point though, David, if, if, let's say the septic fails in 20 years, and they put in a new septic, and they put one in sized at four bedrooms.
They could re-convert that, yes.
Then as far as...
But how would you get around, how would you get around the deed restriction?
That would be a serious problem.
So maybe it's a condition that we place? No. But if it's, if it's a deed restriction, the, the thought there is it would have to get recorded, right?
Yes.
So...
So it could never, no matter how big the system, you couldn't, you could put in a much larger system, but you couldn't market it as anything other than a three-bedroom home, which, you know, might be troubling.
Again, if, if, sorry, go ahead, Mary.
Couldn't the deed restriction be lifted if the septic was upgraded to a four-bedroom? Wouldn't that be sufficient?
Would it have to be worded as such to say?
I, I would pass that along to my title examiner. You know, I, I would look at that, if I were representing someone buying that property, as you will only ever have three bedrooms. If you're looking for a fourth, know that you don't have a right to have it.
So from a, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I might also add that due to the lot size, it's probably not even possible to expand the size of the septic system.
It's a possibility.
Yeah, what's the lot size?
But just in, but just in general, the, I'm trying to understand how this policy works because also logistically, if, if, if a variance is granted, they need to go get that recorded. Then you're saying they would have to go and get something else and then go get that recorded as well?
Correct, yes.
Sounds, I don't know, it doesn't sound efficient. Sounds...
Well, I think it's, I think it's protecting all of the parties.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
And my client is aware of it, and she has a three-bedroom home now.
No, I understood, understood, yeah.
And, and you're, you're okay with not being able to ever have a fourth bedroom?
Yes. This is it.
Okay.
And it would have to market it as such too if she was...
Yeah, no, exactly.
And that's what the deed restriction does place on. I did explain that to her, that, that it would be, it would never be able to be marketed in more than a three-bedroom. And there may be, there may be another form in the state, and I haven't looked into that, that if she did, if she was able to update the septic, if you could then go and, and addend the restriction to a four-bedroom now because the, the septic is...
I would, I would hope there should be because...
I'm sure there must be.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be permanent if, if you repair the defect. They considered that. So the nearest to butter, well, there's two abutters, obviously, one on each side of you, but I had the same thought as David, that I thought that was a structure, that C. So that's not your, that's not the house. So the approximate distance to, to the, that house that's the Flynn, I guess, that's One New Street, that's probably what, about 50? That, that, that looks...
At least 50, if not 70.
Yeah, centrally located in a lot. And then your other...
Over 50 feet, for sure. There, there's a big piece of land between the two houses.
And then to the other one, on the opposite side, that, that house is a little closer to this side of the lot. Again, which side is your driveway on?
The driveway is on the left facing her house, from the, from the street, from Tremont Street.
Okay.
It's on the left.
So it's between your, between your house and your neighbor?
Correct.
Okay. It's on that side, okay.
And I believe the neighbor's house has the dr...
Yeah, I'm the neighbor, so I...
Your driveway is on the right of your house, right? So your two driveways pretty much butt each other? Is that correct?
Your driveway's on the other side.
Your driveway's on the left, okay.
No, I'm all the way, I have a...
Okay.
But I'm on the, I'm on the side closest, so...
And...
The Flins are, she's got a lot more land between her house and the Flins than between my house and her.
Okay. And the right side of your house from the street, looking at the right side, which is where you're proposing to put the addition, does that drop down? Is that at a lower height than, than the rest of your house? Again, I think I was looking at the wrong picture, but I saw three steps, I saw some steps down.
It's, it's just a incline. It's a hill, a decline, so her, her property is higher than...
Okay.
Than the, the property with the C on it, yes.
Okay, what do you think about, two feet higher maybe or...
I mean, probably, it goes, it continues to go downhill, so I would probably say four to five feet. Your property, your neighbor's...
Yeah, but how about between, between the house and where the end of this addition would go?
From the house to the end of the addition?
From her house.
Drop up?
Yeah.
Yeah, less than two feet.
Okay, I think that's what I was looking at then. What's the height of the addition going to be?
The standard, it's going to have a shed roof, so it'll be a standard, you know, eight-foot ceilings, so...
So it's one floor?
One floor.
Not going up to the roof?
Exactly, it's just a shed back to the existing house.
Okay. Was there a bulkhead on that side of the house too?
No, the bulkhead is on the rear of the house.
Still looking at the wrong house, I think. Okay, cross that off.
Which is another reason why I couldn't put the addition off the back of the house because that's where the bulkhead is.
Okay.
The access to the basement.
Okay. And I had the same question about vehicles needing to get to the back of the property. So the side where your driveway is, obviously, they could get around that, that side if they needed to. And then I think we're saying that on the other side, that other house is 70 feet away from the property line. I didn't have any other questions, so I think the setback is 15, 15. So you're looking for 14-plus feet of relief, 13, 14 points?
Three-point something feet?
So we're looking for, the setback's 15, so we're looking for 11.
12, 12.
11.1.
11.1.
Well, you know, timeout for a second. If you ask for a specific footage, and for whatever reason, you're a couple of inches off, you have a real problem.
Okay.
So it's best to ask for the relief, I, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, if I may. It, it's best to ask for the relief that you know, no matter what, you're coming within that and it won't go over it.
That, that was one of the questions I was going to have, is, you know, roof lines typically have an E or, or an overhang. On the setbacks, is, in some towns do it to, you know, the, the whole plain to the sky? Or is it just the, the body of the structure? So, so if the, if the E on the side of the house was to stick out six or eight inches, I would encroach in that 3.9, so then I would ask for three foot so that I could make sure I have a typical.
So a 12, if I understand correctly, you're asking for a 12-foot, 12-feet of relief?
Correct, that, that would be what I would ask, yes.
Is there town water there?
It's.
Or do you have a well?
No, it's town.
Town water, but.
Okay, I, I don't have any questions now, Steven.
Yeah, I just wanted to add something to the septic system. You're not too far from Route 12 and you're talking 20 years down the road. Eventually sewage is gonna come right down Main Street of Oxford.
From your mouth to God's ears.
Oh, yeah.
So I, so I'm looking at the plan and I'm saying, if it comes down Main Street, it's gonna come off to left and right, so I wouldn't be surprised. In 20 years, or less than 20 years, they're gonna have regular sewage coming into that neighborhood if it blows down Route 12.
And again, I know every town's different, but some towns give the residents an option to retain their, their septic, their.
And some don't.
And some don't, and I don't know what, what Oxford would have if that happened, but, but that's legitimate, you know, if, if that happened, then she could go back and hopefully get the relief from the.
A lot of times if it does happen, you still get charged a couple of different ways, one of which is the amount of frontage you have on the road. So you don't wanna tie in, that's fine, you'll still pay some.
Okay, yeah.
All right, any other questions?
No questions.
Okay, I'm gonna open up. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Everything's all set? All right, so what we're gonna do is, do you have any questions?
I, I would move to close the public hearing.
Okay, so I was gonna say, once we close the public hearing, there'll be no more input and then the board will deliberate and we're going to have to have two separate votes, one for the special permit and one for the variance. Special permit is to increase the nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconformity, and variance is looking for the 12-foot side relief. I heard, again, this deed restriction, I'm not sure if that's something we're supposed to be doing so that when they go to record it, they only have to record it once? Or, or if we?
I'm not sure if you need to add that as a condition. It's going to be included in the decision, so whoever looks at that recorded decision is.
Okay.
It's going to be there.
Okay, if it's in the, would be in the decision either way?
Well, if it's gonna be in the decision, I think we do need to vote on it.
You should make that a condition, that's fine.
Really? Oh, so it would just be one of the conditions?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, not a separate vote for that?
Not a separate vote.
Well, no, no, it was, I, I, I think it, it's proper to have a power of the whole.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so that's what we have, I guess David has a motion, no other discussion before we close the public hearing? Okay, David had a motion to close the public hearings, or a second?
Second.
Okay, and the vote, Dan?
Uh, agreed.
To close the public hearing?
To close it, yes, agreed.
Al?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so as I kinda just stated, I don't know if you have any further deliberation, anything you wanna talk about? To Stephen's point too, it's a very, very tightly packed neighborhood. There do seem to be a lot of buildings that are, multiple buildings on some of those small lots.
And, you know, this is certainly a, the reason for the request is more than worthwhile and, and I, I think should be honored and respected, and I think the town should, should assist the homeowner in, in looking to accomplish her objective.
Okay, Al, did you, I can't tell if you're trying to say.
They talked about any overhang.
I'm sorry?
They were talking about.
Yeah, I wasn't sure of the answer on that.
And I think we've always considered the overhang, from the overhang to the lot line is the distance. I don't know what you'd consider, they have some special things if you have a handicapped addition to the property, but I don't think that would apply in this case.
Well, I, I, from what he said, Alan, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, that they were not looking for any access or egress.
No, he's just saying.
On that extension.
I think he's saying just in relation to counting.
The overhang on the roof.
To counting where you are from the, from the property line, like if there was steps coming out, they don't usually count that. But they, but he's saying they potentially do count the overhang.
The overhang on the roof, I think we would count. Normally we would count.
Yeah, I, I think we have in the past.
That we gave extra relief, but he mentioned, he thought he was having an overhang where he wasn't counting.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I wasn't counting and we, and we, I asked for an additional 0.9, which is, which is.
Yeah, so 11.1 is the actual, David suggested 12 feet of relief gives that. Okay. 0.9 feet.
So that after constructing, they don't say, oh, we're an inch over.
Yeah. Be honest with you, I never thought we counted the overhang, so, but maybe.
Well, there's some you don't count, but some you do.
Okay.
For some reason, I thought we had the issue come up before and we did.
Could've, could've.
And just to be on the safe side, I think.
Yeah, that'll give me a, typically you have a six to nine-inch overhang, so with a six to nine-inch overhang, I wouldn't infringe with, with the relief you're hopefully going to pass.
Okay, so.
That's all right, lines are covered.
Okay. So any other discussion or is anyone prepared to make a motion for the special permit?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm prepared, I don't wanna step on anyone's toes, but I'm prepared to make a, and I so moved to allow the special permit to increase the nonconformity in line with 15 feet going down to three feet, so that would be 12 feet of relief.
Okay, this is for the special permit, okay. And so is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, and the vote? Dan?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, so that's approved and then we would need a motion for the variance, and this also is the 12 feet of relief specifically, and, and you wanted the condition, we thought, well, the condition of the three-bedroom restriction should be put as a condition.
Yes, and, and frankly, if I may, it's only because there was reference in here to it, I, I think you're gonna be limited by the size of the septic system anyway. If the septic system isn't big enough for four, then it's a given there can't be a fourth bedroom, at least not as far as, hey, I'm gonna put it on the market as a fourth bedroom. If someone is gonna sleep in another room, you know, that's what happens behind closed doors, the, you know, but since it's in here already, I, I would make that a, a condition.
Yeah, I, I would like to see it only because of the fact that I'm hearing they would have to go back and record it. I'd rather they record this once and not have to get this recorded than go back and record a second thing.
So save them $105.
All right, so.
So it, I, I make a motion to, to, to allow the, the, the relief to, and to have the relief requested of three feet from the side and the deed restriction to be set forth for the property to be a three-bedroom.
Can I comment or?
No.
No, yeah, I just.
All right.
No problem, I, that's why I asked.
Anybody wanna second that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I, I personally am not in favor of the restriction, but.
The, yeah, and, and my point on that was simply because I'm hearing that, that they're going to have one put and they're gonna have to go back and record it.
There's a lot of other things they could do though with this septic system, that they could do without getting relief. They could build up, they could add a lot of bedrooms, they could add more people into the bedrooms.
Oh, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't fall under our.
Bedroom.
Yeah.
So I don't see why we should have to put a restriction in there.
Yeah.
It's something that they could do if they choose in the future to have the freedom to do.
I'm gonna put this.
Why we're restricting them, that's all.
Well, I'm not sure why, Al, it was, it was referenced in the submission. And normally, you're right, I, I, I wouldn't go along with that either because this is America.
They could add a second.
I'm sorry?
Now, they could add a third floor, I guess they have two floors, but they could go up.
Well, if they.
And have more rooms, just so they'd have to.
If they did that.
If you put, if you got a town sewer system in, then you don't have to say may I to anybody from the sewer aspect.
But, but at that point, then they would have to come back and show to the, show to whoever's on the ZBA at, at that time to remove that restriction because there's town septic and if, if they were able to put another, you know, third floor or whatever, that's fine. But again, I, I brought it up because it was part of the submission.
But I think it does affect the ability to resell the prop at some point in the future.
It does limit it.
If you prevent people from doing something that they might have a right to do at that time, as they're gonna say.
I'm just not sure why it was included to begin with.
Well, the gentleman said he was told when he talked with somebody in the town that it required a deed restriction, so.
And I would assume, Gary, that that was the Board of Health that you spoke with?
Yep. So this seems new to us because we, I don't think we've ever had this before, where, where someone has come and, and said, I mean, we've always talked, as someone said earlier, we've talked about the size of the septic and we just know if it's 1,500 gallons, it's three bedrooms, and, and we know that that's the limiting factor, so when they apply for a building permit or something like that, they know they're limited to three. We never heard anybody from the town saying you had to have a deed restriction, so that's new to me.
You know what, I, I would like to amend my motion.
Why don't you just rescind it?
Fine, it's rescinded. I, I don't want you to, I, I brought it up, I don't want you to have to go and spend another $105 to record yet another document, but if you can get this by without having to record the other document and without having us specifically limit your property to three bedrooms, I, I think that's a good thing. So I, I would rescind the motion and I would move that the relief requested be allowed without the deed restriction, but subject to whatever requirements are in place through the Board of Health.
Okay, and the amount of relief?
12 feet, so you'd have a three-feet, three-foot side yard setback.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. Dan?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so it's approved. I'm not sure if you know the process, but I believe there's a 20-day appeal period that anybody could appeal, that's from, once the decision all gets typed up and filed with the clerk, I think that's when it starts, the 20 days. Okay?
Do the apartments all get re-notified or is it just?
No, I don't believe so.
It's just public.
Yeah.
Actually, they do.
Oh, they do?
I sent out a notification of.
Okay, sorry.
Decision to all of the.
Okay.
So notwithstanding that no one else thought it necessary to appear other than your next-door neighbor?
Right.
Okay.
I'm the one here who supports.
Well, that's a good next-door.
She is a good neighbor.
And to clarify the map because.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So Mary, we could just go into other business maybe first?
Certainly, yes.
Yeah, okay, so in your packet tonight, we had, we had some minutes from September 9th that Mary's looking to get approved. This was 45 Prospect Street. Is anybody, let's see, who was here? Meeting members, pretty much all of us were here, so anybody doesn't wanna vote on this tonight or are we prepared to go forward in voting on it? Okay, I don't hear any dissent, so.
I think we can go forward.
Okay, who wants to make a move to approve these? Anybody wanna make a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll try to make a motion.
Just, just say approved as written.
I'd like to approve the zoning Board of Appeals meeting minutes from September 19th, 2021, as written.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
I wasn't here that.
You weren't here?
No, no, I, I.
Oh, absent, I'm sorry.
I didn't come because I had a conflict.
Okay, I see, sorry, okay. All right, and the vote then, Dan?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, abstaining for you.
Abstaining.
Okay, what else do we have? We have the 2021 ZBA annual report that Mary typed up, which just gives a description of what we did over the past year, and I believe they put this in the, what do they call that book, is it the town report?
Um, yes, yes.
Okay.
It comes out at town meeting, yes.
Says we're all getting a bonus this year.
I want the key to the executive washroom if, if anyone is interested.
Okay, then you, we also talked about, you got the conflict of interest and those forms, it looks like everybody took care of those. And I, I guess I would just like to say, I'd, I'd like to find out more about this deed restriction eventually, that, that, of what this gentleman was town told by the Board of Health.
Right.
Again, I had never heard that before, I think we all know.
Yeah.
And you would think you, Board of Health, that, that it's, the size of the septic is what limits the number of bedrooms, so.
Yes.
I never, never heard about there being a deed.
See, it's not always number of bedrooms, sometimes it's just total number of rooms. There's a formula.
Okay.
That the Board of Health uses.
Yeah.
Per Title V, capacity of the septic system for the number of rooms that you have. It's not necessarily just bedrooms.
Okay, but I, I still had never heard the deed restriction.
Typically, it's 110 gallons per day, per bedroom, so a three-bedroom house would be 330.
330.
30 gallons per day. So apparently, Mr. Collette went to see the Board of Health and confirmed that the septic system is.
Yeah.
Three-bedroom, that therefore can't be a four.
Yeah, I, I'd be interested to know when he gets his order and he records it and then he comes back to, to get his building permits or what have you, if they do enforce if they do enforce and tell him he has to go have some deed restriction put on there.
I think it all depends on staff. I think it depends on, um, whether, whether a health director would make that requirement.
Okay.
I think the health director would be wrong.
I know there's often a deed restriction, if it's only a two-bedroom house, that it can't ever be a three, because the septic system is, you know, so undersized.
Again, it just seems odd that, that, as we talked about, if town sewer came by, then you wouldn't necessarily have, you wouldn't have that limitation of the original intent of the limitation.
So, Mr. Silverman is a lawyer. You could probably draw up a document to lift that deed restriction.
I, personally, I think it's, it, it's wrong for a town to require a deed restriction. The bottom line is, the town can say, that's a three-bedroom, uh, 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 property because the septic isn't big enough to make it four bedrooms. Okay, but to have it be a deed restriction, I, I think it is overreaching.
I agree.
So you have a three-bedroom house right now, you're adding an addition with another bedroom. So the Board of Health is looking at it as this could potentially be a four-bedroom house.
So may...
But, you know...
So we're, we're following Title V regulations.
I, you know, if she wanted to have four bedrooms, she's gonna have four bedrooms. What the town says really is never gonna be relevant. When she goes to sell it, she's gonna sell it as a three-bedroom. But if, if, if she has people coming in from out of the town, out of town regularly, and that fourth room has a closet, she could throw a cart in there. You know, the, the septic police aren't gonna come in and say, "You can't sleep in that room." You know, requiring a deed restriction, I think, is, is a little much. Clearly, when she goes to sell the place, she can only list it as a three-bedroom. If she lists it as anything other than a three-bedroom, she has some potential liability.
Right, and, and it happens all the time. It happens all the time, you see listings for new houses on the market, and, um, you, you see the pictures, there's a fourth bedroom in the basement, completely illegal.
Maybe we should have put a restriction that said that the number of bedrooms needs to be reflected by the size of the septic, or, or if there's town sewer, then it's, you know, kinda cover all the bases, and then it wouldn't, I, I don't know.
Yeah, that's where the question...
I personally would rather not encumber some, I was confused by why that was set forth in here. I, I would rather never make anything a deed restriction.
Well, I think your one governing body that oversees the, and has the ability to grant relief for pre-existing nonconforming or from dimensional requirements, Board of Health is another governing body that oversees everything Title V.
Yeah, so they could override what we, by us not putting the deed restriction, they could still force this gentleman. See, I, I just don't, it just seemed something new to us. I don't think I've ever heard that before.
If we put it in... I've never seen it.
If we put it in, and something changes in the future, and they had to, they'd have to come back to the board...
And that's what I think is wrong, that's too much of a...
And get it relieved, and I don't think we have to do that.
Because it's already a fault.
Let the Board of Health handle their business.
Right, there's already a policy in... There's already a policy in place that limits how many bedrooms we can have. Okay, so I think we're...
See, it'd be different if this house was out in the boonies up on Conlon Road. And, you know, sewage is not gonna go up there for another hundred years. And you look at, you gotta look in the crystal ball and look beyond that. So I agree, uh, of not putting any restrictions on it, now that, that you look at the whole picture. Because ten years down the road, if they get sewage, there's a Title V regulations go right out the window. But now you enforced her...
Yeah.
Now you can't have a three-bedroom. Well, we got, we got, uh, town sewage, why can't we have a four-bedroom?
Okay, I think we're kind of...
Go up another...
I think we're all in agreement and surprised by this, that, that people might be told now going forward that they need to have a deed restriction, so...
Is there a new Board of Health agent?
It's probably more common than you think.
We've just never heard of it.
Yeah. I know in the past, when somebody has come to, for instance, the planning board for an accessory apartment that's going to add another bedroom, the way we've handled it previously was that, that extra, that existing bedroom would be converted to something else, like a den.
Yeah, she said she was gonna turn it to a study, and then...
Yes.
You're saying she'd have to show like a before-and-after sketch of what it would be?
Typically, once, once the building permit, um, is submitted, the application, yes.
Okay. All right, any other business? Otherwise, I'm gonna read the, the text to go into executive session? All set? Anybody, okay. All right, pursuant to the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty, A, Section twenty-one, A, three, the board will go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigate, of the litigation position of the town regarding the matter of seven-twenty-two Main Street, HAC Appeal of DHCD Safe Harbor Determination. I, as chair, declare that discussing this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty, A, Section twenty-one, A, three, and only come out for the purposes of adjournment tonight. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into executive session pursuant to the open meeting law of Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty, A, Section twenty-one, A, three, as declared by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we're gonna ask for a recorded roll call, so I'll stay at, I'll keep the same order, Dan Champagne?
Uh, Dan Champagne here.
Uh, yes or no to go into executive session?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, okay, that's all right.
Yes.
Al Saint Germain, yes?
Steve Balcoonis, yes.
David Silverman, yes.
Pete LaFlash, yes. Okay, so that is it. There's no public present, um, guess we're in executive session. The cameras have to be shut off, I guess, right?